I ain't chose to be, na bo te, eh ruwene bago, no gabo ndo governor. Mano ofo ye na, ye onende governor biagwamal, nde chori bu governor biagwamal. Ofo ye nimele ruteleba, around ten thirty AM. Makana nde behe na na bata na taana. Asana ye mwendidi na ine bidu from under senate, rutele kende governor. Ando no rute here, thanks to Father Matthew. Nyeri de permission, no obu no kuire kucheri ya biare, kuongwe de fifteen minutes. Iguanyo nyobo, eh odi kojerakuko, iyorwamal, niya ina tena no yar, mobunaya chiaki, lion building. Ozon, ane mekwe si kani mar, no obu no kuchero kuozubo. It's a privilege Father Matthew is ye ane ye, no kuchero ku because no biaritano gi. Kajwa na judekwe shiri juan, ozama, he can take a bow, jele ebende behe na na bata. Biko ye abay yo, obu na ane ye preferential treatment, obay yo. Ma nde amamunu na na bata goma, mbago nu baranketi, thank you and God bless you. So, I ina ponite, kaini shiku, ma kandis na zo governor, biko ka, eh biagwani ye melani. I ina anuriye ndu governor ni ku, ma ina ukaa shea rea. Eh kurumokumba in bidu, bidu na ninety mile ruwenu, rutele opi junction. Bohari wey one hundred and fourteen days from today, Ibu president in Nigeria. For the past seven years, eight months and six days of president, oshinegi ninety mile baratopi. No obu managa na ba. Ndaba na mi boetiti, we megi, I ain ga shea zelejala. So niye mne kure no bo, no obu niye ye ya guani ye karre as governor. Guanyo hi de arre pota, kumori mari de mekote. So that no ruwemba ya dugo, ki mari ya za, no moronya bena mu jeroshi. Eh di de no shiga ne kebo, ofo ye ne kebo gana ta kwanu. Ozadia ya mamki okagane she, ine ka ta kwanu, chete na de keye. So, obu, obu ni kwechere kwa yi de me, a ya dugo de ya dudu as a follow up. So, I ina ponite, Honorable Frank Mueke, Nemeka Junior of Apuga.
Thank you, thank you. Ndeba ye kene mu no, Bikon, good afternoon, Father. Well, Biko, ndeba ye kene mu, ye kene mu, Bikon. Eh, I make a name the Father, the Catholic Church Saint Teresa's and the entire Nsoka Catholic Diocese for this initiative. And I make a way, Prof, Professor Rose, Honore, for that very incisive admonition and counsel here in Dubai. Um, also thank Father Matthew, again, for the deep insight that you gave. Bikon ndeba in, Alan, ah, thank you, thank you, Bikon. Agame sorundu mozi ne ye gekele. Agame sorundu mozi na ja hagima. Ori miri ne ruari no titogina. Ah iha di no ya ne fifa kane ye gekele. Omomado none nua, ne wibwere na ja hagima. I ina sigi maila, emaila, emaila. Bikon, amatrochineke mama manuzo furiche. Makana tata na Nigeria, ihe na kwado ibawe. Ihe na kwado ibawe. Unye ne chweki he shaga, na the political arena. Ososochuku, biye weriki de udu script, I ina hutata. Ososochuku biye weriki gojite uku naaka, niye nene eme, kandiba ye weki teteno ra, kandiga ye weki kunie no ra. Oh ihe nduwe gwe gwa, shina na ja chineke mama, I ineke ne chineke, nozo furiche. Afambu Frank, Nemeka Mueke Junior. Abumo oye ishiozala, in Nkano West Local Government Area of Enugu State. Amorumo na Kano, Northern Nigeria. Eh je m primary school na Saint Paul's Catholic School na Lagos, Cambido. Wee gucha primary schoola, na schoola na bo Shehu Garbaye Primary School, Ameduguri, Bonu State. Chizeba weje schoola na bo Federal Government College, Meduguri. Wee ha mete na schoola na nineteen eighty-two. Mete se weje we University of Maduguri. From there, I went to Federal University of Technology Yola and came out in nineteen eighty-five with a second class upper degree in zoology. I later went on, went back to the same university and took my first master's degree in public administration. And subsequently, went to Harvard University in the United States, where I took my second master's degree in public policy and strategic management. Ah, ebaka nozwe futa, orisonro was in the private sector as an operations manager. Before I was invited to government in nineteen ninety-nine, first of all as consultant to government on economic affairs, with responsibility for development planning and the transformation of public owned enterprises. Ebaka no, before, I was then sent off to the Community County Council, which was a poverty alleviation initiative for rural communities. Amo abu, the only political office holder now, that had the privilege to visit every community in Enugu State. At that time, there were two hundred and nine communities. As state coordinator, I had to go to each of these communities to establish what you call the community development committees. And the essence of that agency was to identify the needs of these communities and through a partnership between government and the communities to address those needs. I was subsequently appointed chief of staff to the governor. And then, at the end of the first term, I was then nominated, first as federal minister, joining the federal cabinet as minister for intergovernmental affairs and special duties. Then I was later again made minister for intergovernmental affairs and youth development, and later minister for information and national orientation, and the last but not the least as minister for communication before the tenure of President Obasanjo came to an end. When I finished that, I went on to the United States for further studies. And as I finished, I was again invited by the Nigerian Economic Summit Group, which is the most influential private sector leading tank in Nigeria, which has responsibility for economic advocacy and then of course advice to the federal government of Nigeria. And if you want to know the impact of that institution, then perhaps you recall what happened between the period two thousand and nine and two thousand and fourteen. You know what the state of the economy was at the time when I was there and what it is today. And then mostly because of the impervious mental capacity of the current federal administration. I'm going to go into my agenda because of the short time, I may keep it simple. I will keep it very simple. I need to keep it simple because at the end of the day, I may he na yai, our needs are simple, very, very simple. And no, I'm no gonna go Ibo, ogonogo iba manso, unso wa, ye ane nena yai. So, I'm not going to promise you that I will build ten thousand kilometers of road, no. We do not have ten thousand kilometers of road in Enugu State. I'm not going to, I'm not going to promise you that I'm going to build airplanes. We don't need airplanes in Enugu at this time. I'm not going to promise you that I'm going to build a hundred, a hundred story skyscraper. That is not what our people need. What our people need today is water to drink. That's what we want. What our people need are roads, basic roads for our people to apply on, that is what we need. Sharora i opi Nsoka Road, that is what we need. Opitoo, I mean, opi Tonight My Road, that is what we need. To transform and to transport, produce and facilitate vehicular and human traffic. What we need is security for our people to be secure, that is what we need. Oni de ogonogo Ibo, deal with security, other things will come. These things that I talk about are the foundations of development. If these foundations are not there, nothing else you say, nothing else you do will matter. People are suffering. What I am talking about are things like, how do we promote agriculture? This is what we are talking about. As far back as the sixties, the Oparo government had enough sense to set up cattle ranches. He had enough sense to set up farm settlements. He had enough sense to create portries and piggrays all over the place. What has happened since that time? Ndeba ye gi bo ndeba. Hunger is finished now people. These are the things that I will advance my mind to as governor. How do we produce food to feed our people? How do we produce food to assuage hunger? How do we produce food to make sure that our people do not starve? These are the things I'm talking about. I'm not interested in any exotic policies. These are the things that concern me as governor. How do we secure our people? How do we give our people water? How do we create access? The next thing I'm going to talk about is the issue of human capital. Our primary schools are consistently on strike. How any government will allow the foundations of education in our state, in our country, to be so neglected? When you say to primary school teachers, how much I strike he is woike? What kind of government is that? Primary school is the foundation. Primary school teachers and primary school education will receive priority attention from me. And I'm going to do this in partnership with the church. I believe that the church can do so much more. We know how much time is devoted to training one Reverend Father. The amount of education that is given. And I believe that there's so much more that we can do with our church, with our Catholic church and with other denominations to train our children. So that is one area that will form the foundation for my human capital development. The next thing that bothers us is that even when parents have actually trained the children, after straining so hard to train children, oro adhe. Oro adhe, as a shop market, be the condition we is wa kwa hoso. And I'm saying that for our youngsters, I will pay maximum attention on what? On employment. How will this be? I recognize that there are only so many people that government can employ. In fact, that will be de-emphasized a lot, but there's something we can do. What we can do is, how do we create an enabling environment for businesses to come to Enugu? While, how do we create an enabling environment? Kandunke na no kaha hafi na, businesses na hafi Enugu. And what do they need? Ihe geji we have on the business kaha noro, buka the same thing mu nu na cho. Moody guard, uzo guard, security guard, judicial roho, oka guard. These are the same things that we need. So if we can make ourselves comfortable, we will make businesses comfortable. If the businesses are comfortable, they will set up in Enugu. They will employ our people. They will create, eh eh eh, you know, economic development and our youngsters will be employed. This will require intense marketing of Enugu in order for people to find this place attractive. The next thing I want to talk about is certain areas that are peculiar to Nsoka. And what are these? Because of the presence of the University of Nigeria, the only one in our country's history. Oh, ye hiye monu. But let us ask ourselves, has this university realized its full potential? Nenua noa. Have our people benefited maximally in this Enugu? My answer is no. Because most of the people that come out here, they have to go out in search of greener pastures. And I'm saying that doesn't, that doesn't have to be the case. This Nsoka can become a technology hub. Nsoka has not, as a matter of fact, achieved its potential as the, as the alternate city in Enugu. Eh, Nsoka would have to be invested in, in such a way as to really transform it into a city. This university here is, was, was created in nineteen sixty. And so, it's going to become a technology hub where we ensure that youngsters can be made to stay here and they can really achieve their full potential. Because we'll create the IT infrastructure, hanidi dueme. We're going to focus on the area of, say, Norlywood, to bring back Norlywood to Enugu. We're going to focus on entertainment. We're going to focus on fashion and design. And Enugu will become known again as a cultural hub of the southeast of Nigeria. The next thing I want to talk about is the issue of water, for goodness sake. What is any society without water? How can Enugu be starving for water? When we have been given such many natural, eh eh, natural water wells by God freely? Let me not even talk about the city of Enugu, I'll focus on Nsoka. Everyone has made reference to Addada River. The federal government had invested, had dammed the river. All this government needed to do was to channel this water into reservoirs and reticulate, and reticulate Nsoka. And yet it could not be done. I want to assure you and hold me to account as I stare into this camera and make this solemn pledge. Within twelve months of my governorship, there'll be water in N, eh, in Nsoka, there'll be water in Nsoka. It's not, it's not, it's not a big deal. And there are many roads, there are many roads that have been left uncatared to over the last several years. We would pay attention to these roads. I will refrain from making any specific and any, eh eh, specific promises and I will say why. Because, yes, I've become aware of a lot of challenges, but we are not in a position to have the entire information required at this time to take certain decisions. But I want to leave Nsoka with this. I don't have to be an Nsoka person in order to cater to the needs of Nsoka. As governor, the entire state is my constituency. And I'm not going to join the league of those who say because they are from a particular place, therefore, the entire resources of a state will be channeled to that area. In any case, you have seen what has happened. Even those who are from some of these areas have not exactly, you know, things have not exactly played out. Bikon Nsoka, I make a nunu, nkaa nu fta goduru, oba sokam. I'm so delighted, na ndeba e fta, i gente, to gain new, new knowledge. Oh ihe nduwe shi nana tuchuku mama, mama, for this time in Nigeria. It's not business as usual. Our people have learned, monies, even when you pay those monies, money is belonging to you. You take it, but do the right thing. Better still, don't take it, but do the right thing. Afamobo Frank Mueke Junior. My party is the All Progressive Grand Alliance. And normally, when I go out, people usually enjoy, eh beka ge biyaka, eh be solo cookie Ibo. Eh beka ge biyaka, eh be solo cookie Ibo. Eh beka ge biyaka, eh be solo cookie Ibo. Eh beka ge biyaka, eh be solo cookie Ibo. Thank you so much, God bless you all, thank you.
Otitodi Njessou Krissy. I ine kene, governorship candidate of Apuga, Honorable Frank Mueke Junior. Eh, Biko, ane manoya na ozubo. That is why he has to take questions, he have the approval of Father Matthew. Mueke, when you take your seat, the questions will come. Ah, many of them here. I want to remind the candidates now here, especially this side and the governor. We have gone to Udeno Local Government, Ibu esee south, Nsoka, Ibu etiti, and Ozoa. We couldn't go to Isusor and Enugu esee ke, that Ibu esee not. Obu na ya choki je, mobunaya magana inwele madu de. No obu no fodo, chichira inuute, ndu nu po we la, ye kwe megi kani garu nuzo. Asa anya biya. Makanka, anya agama roundo, no ma ju ju ni na ju. Take note, obu na makunu, questions unku nu na biya. Nkaa bonka nde governor. Muwa neba, I moderated all, all the five local governments in Nigeria, including this one. Good, eh, onye lebo party biar, moonya ke deputy governor PDP. I could sift the questions for your party and for the person. So Mueke, take note. Esene Apuga, I will begin the questions. Nju tazara, the summary of what we heard, I will help guide the questions. Nkaa de ye yeke ka, as a teaser, ki mari ye je shisona flow ya biya. From what we know of you, this is your own personal question before your party. It is clear, it is a clear fact that your trajectory and path to political participation has a complete imprint of PDP from your time as a community development officer in the state to be chief of staff and as a minister of the federal republic. With all these engagements and involvements in PDP, the same PDP could not find rewarded to fly their flag in this election. Hence your surgeon to Apuga. What else do you have to convince us to vote for you beyond the PDP assessment of you? Number two. Otitodi Njessou. Number two question is for your party. Your party Apuga has a generous claim in Ibo land as a party of onya yanawa neya. And Nkaa bonka ni, it has also disassembled the idea that he has come to promote an Ibo man to be the president of Nigeria, consciously or otherwise. It appears that this twenty twenty-three election has thrown up a widely accepted Ibo man in the person of Mr. Pito Bi as a very likely and potent route to Ibo presidency. But the most vicious, virulent and little attached to the realization of this has consistently and unwaveringly come from your party through your just elected party leader. How do you want us to, want us the Ibo's to believe that your consistent brandishing slogan, Nkaa bonka ni, is not a deceptive propaganda? Conventionally, in twenty, he have questions, nde ma boonya meba. Conventionally, twenty twenty-three, Enugu governorship was on to Enugu East Senatorial District on the basis of equity. Enugu East Zone has a Kano, Nikke and Isusor strength path. If equity, fair play and justice are some of the cornerstone of good government, where lies justice in your aspiration, this of governor of Enugu State? Bear in mind that the Kano block, where you come from, has a shot at the lion building in the person of Chief Moroccan Naman between nineteen ninety-nine to twenty oh seven. The first on it, local government's primary schools have been owed seventeen years of gratuity and twenty months of pension. What will you do to help these pensioners who serve the Enugu state for thirty-three years of their lives? What positive impact did you create as a minister of information in the state and Nigeria at large? As a minister with three different portfolios, how many development project did you, did you attract in Enugu state? And how many people did you facilitate their employment in the federal ministries? Thank you, the answer.
Well, ndeba ye kene kuwe mu. Thank you. Um, these are excellent questions. Even though I would have loved since we're in a town hall meeting, um, it would have been good for people to rise up and ask questions themselves. Or even if you are reading a question, you identify the author of the question. I think that's fair enough. So Biko, let's start with question number one. Who asked the question, let the person own up to the question, then I'm happy to respond.
Otitodi Njessou. Iyon na ju bu, no obu ru na ju ju ju, si dere, onye ju la. I'm sorry, all the while inea ine mebu, ye han e mebu, i dere. Oye ya ju the question, not onye ju. Mana di, onye ya za, bu what the guideline says. When you take a question, you say no obu for Mr. Zia, ma Mr. Ugu, ma. No ita, we. Eh, Biko, Biko, I ina yo, obu ni kachori ju ju ju. You raise your hand because nozacha now, he need to go. So, thank you.
Okay, as the court, as the court pleases, thank you. Odumabikun, the first question, very good question, about my departure from the PDP to Apuga. Mo I believe that, eh, we are, none of us is new to Enugu state. We're all very familiar with what happened in the political space in the last eighteen months. First of all, I never signaled any intention to run for governorship under PDP. I left the party long before the primaries, as one. Secondly, in leaving the party, I think I was exercising a fundamental democratic right. And there is nothing new in political actors changing their party for whatever reason or the other. But let me remind us of a few things this afternoon. The essence of political organization is lost. The essence of political loyalty is lost when a political party is not able to respect even its own constitution. The essence of political loyalty is lost when a level playing field cannot be allowed for political actors. My brother sitting here, he was almost assaulted, in fact, he was assaulted at the venue of the primaries. Are we saying we do not know this? Should I start naming all the people? What happened to UK Poremado, was he not running? What happened to Chinakoha, was he not running? What happened to, eh, to Konelos Naji, Herbert or Fortu Kwebo, what happened to them? And so many people that I cannot even remember. Most of these people left because what? A level playing field was not provided. A level playing field could not be guaranteed. But some of us had seen what was playing out. And so I sympathize with those that had to wait and to see. But we saw ahead, for goodness sake. Now, the next thing is this, the next thing I want to talk about is this. Kankawalu something, Bikon, hold on, hold on, hold on. Let me explain something, let me explain something. It's just another time, addo. If not, I would have loved to address the issue of the Ibo identity. It's something I speak about all the time. How do we reclaim our identity? I spoke at a public lecture for hours at University of Nigeria, I think about ten to fourteen days ago, I was there. And I was talking about the Ibo identity. And whether or not you are aware of it, Ibo's face an existential threat in Nigeria today. And nobody will save us, nobody will help us if we do not organize ourselves politically, if we do not mobilize, if we do not chart our own political course. Let this be clear. Any which way, no matter how clever you want to sound to yourself or how clever you want to appear to an audience, Ibo's face an existential threat in this country today. Most of you may not even recall the history of the founding of PDP. PDP and the motion for it was spearheaded by late Dr. Alex Ekwehme, who first convened the group of thirty-four. But what happened eventually? The same party that was founded and pushed by a revered Ibo icon, we have lost out completely. We have shown fidelity to the PDP for twenty-four years. What have we gotten in return? Opitoo, Tonight My Road has been there for two and a half decades. Check and ask yourself, point to any major, major regional project that was eh 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 conceived and finished by the PDP in the southeast of Nigeria anywhere. Name one. So, the question then is, what is the essence of political association? It is either personal interest or group interest. In this case, let us focus on group interest. Because personal interest in a way was sufficiently assuaged. But as a group, what have we gotten? What then is the basis? Why we should continue to associate with the PDP? And part of the reason, and it was the reason why Ibo's even supported the PDP, was because of the, eh, the founding document founded on equity and justice and egalitarian principles. And for twenty-something years, Ibo's showed fidelity to those principles. Ashahe bago na ya bagowe, ashahe, ai bu de wa, na ye bu de we. Ashahe kota kandi, ayakwa kandi, ashahe kota kicha, ayakwa kicha. Mana when it was time for us to reap the benefits of our fidelity, what happened? Asuwo Ibo, eh me we wa yo. I will not associate with anybody, any institution that cannot keep its word, that cannot respect its founding documents. I will never do it. Ndema remu man, na icho kwa kwa da ramuna, mu na kucheku kushine iha ge eme, go and do something else. Ogada ramuna go zubo. Ogada ramuna go zubo zubo, so I have absolute no apology. Now, why Apuga? It is the same thing. It is the same thing I told you. We must chart our own political course. And whilst it may not exactly cohere at this time, ultimately, whether it is Apuga or whatever you want to call it, Ibo's must come together in unison to chart a political course. It must happen, however long it takes. And this is how, this is how the southwest did it. They started with Alliance for Democracy. They went on to Action Congress. They went on to Action Congress of Nigeria. And then eventually, they formed this partnership with ANPP and the rest of them and produced APC. They waited patiently. They nurtured it. But we do not want to do the hard work. Nobody will do it for us, no matter how long it takes. Ndebo must come back ultimately to say, this is who we are. This is where we stand, and we must push ahead together. So, as far as I'm concerned, verdict or no verdict, I am proud of my, my, the nurture that I received. I'm proud of the parents that gave birth to me, the training and education they gave me, the exposure that they gave me, the nurture that they gave me. And I'm proud for the exposure that I have. And that is why I can stand up with confidence anywhere and face people who, for whatever consideration, choose to see white and call it black. And I have no problem with the final outcomes. But let it be on record, nam, bona, da, she, kené, we, nishna, he, ku, him. Nam, wa, bu, Frank, Mweke, ok, if you, na, baro, junko. Nam, mo, shir, na, me, ku, him. And I'm futar. And I showed clearly that na, me, ku, him. And I would challenge the status quo. And for me, it's not about me. It's about a certain little boy, 3 years old, he's in Eva Valley. He's about, his name is Madabuchi. It's about the little Esther that I found in Ugu Peak in the midst of drug dealers. It's about that child in Ihe, eh, 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 Apugo, who is an orphan, who is starving, whose mothers cannot afford to feed. It's about a 31-year-old woman who has suffered stroke, and there's nobody to help. It's about people that I find all over the place, in Ibo is the south and in Ibo is the north, who cannot afford to feed themselves, who are crawling on the floor, begging for water to drink. It's about them. It's not so much about me. And I pray that the good Lord will help us. I pray that he will look into our hearts and that he will touch your hearts, that all of you stand up for the benefit of society and for the good of your children. So that even when you're no more there, you can go with confidence in your heart that you've left behind a society and a government that understands what service is. Public service. It's not about me, it's not about my friends, it's not about my family. It's about the people. It's about the people sitting here. It's about the people who cannot come here. It's about the women selling vegetable by the roadside. It's about them. It's not about anyone else but these people. And I hope you bear this in mind all the time, and even when you go to the polls. Somebody spoke about, o, ya, na, wa, ne. For your information, o, ya, na, wa, ne, as a slogan, speaks, kanso, mo, Ibo, biko. It speaks to the Ibo social cosmology. Here, the mara, eh, as, ndebo. O, ya, ala, na, wa, ne. That is the essence of Ibo community organization. That is the essence of Ibo existence. That is the Ibo worldview. So that as you're sitting here, and all of you are sitting here, I'm sure, especially the eldest ones amongst us, all of you have, under your wings, under your roof, under your patronage of benefaction. You have people that were not born by you. You have people who are relatives, or even strangers that you don't know, you cater to them. So the Apuga slogan speaks to the Ibo social cosmology. That is what it is about. O, ya, ala, na, wa, ne. Non, o, Ibo, shared prosperity. And in any case, I spoke about what? The peculiar political circumstances that now exist. Political actors were seeing all sorts of behaviors. And people have expressed those views. Those are legitimate democratic rights, legitimate political views. And they had liberty to express those views. As for me and my household, I am completely and totally, unapologetically, frankly obedient. Totally. Completely and totally, without any apology whatsoever to anybody. So anybody is at liberty to hold any views he wants to hold. But I, for me, I say, as for me and my household, political household, personal household, extended household, we are completely and totally obedient. Now, on the issue, somebody asks a question about, about what? Somebody asks a question about, about, somebody asks a question about zoning and things like that. He said, what is the justice? Now, let me tell you about justice, the way I understand it. In 2007, as we prepared to leave the, to leave government, I was invited. I've gone on record many times. I am now actually going on record again. I was invited by former President Olusha Gobassanjio, with whom I maintain very close personal relationship. And he said to me, the government is coming to an end. What do you plan to do? I didn't understand what he was saying. In fact, he summoned me back from an assignment in the UK. And when I came back, he said to me, what do you plan to do? I said, well, I'm going back to school. He said, what do you want to go and do? I said, I'm going back to school for further studies. And he just, that was, he's a very funny man. He hissed, and what was it? He now said to me, I want you to become the governor of Enugu State. Mu, so, sinan, imoje. She, Mr. President, nam, do, flattered. Manabiko, namu, I cannot accept such a proposal or proposition from him. Why? Nishen, eh, benshi. Ne, with arrangement, ana, ana, any respect. No, ya, na, choga, is like, lenzi, go, on, na, mani. Na, in charge, oh, who, local government, na, is the same zone. Now, obu, haywa, cold way. Oku, 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 nse, mbah. That I will not do such a thing. Obu, no, we, he, me, as president and commander in chief. Mano, we, wo, di, I didn't consider it right. Didn't consider it godly. I didn't consider it just. I didn't consider it fair. And so I declined it. And in the end, after almost 45 minutes of conversation, he prayed for me, and he blessed me, and he said to me, I wish everybody reasoned like you. That to me is justice. That is what justice means to me. Respecting people, respecting the rights of others, even when it is so simple and so easy for you to take that thing. That for me is my understanding of justice. That is my understanding of justice. And so at this time, I'm not aware of any kind of additional or further zoning of anything anywhere. But in any case, this is democracy. And I'm hopeful that the electorate will, of course, exercise your democratic rights based on your thoughts on these issues. Thank you. On the matter of gratuitous payment, my response is very simple, biko. A laborer is worthy of his wages. Nde, je, kugwa. Once these things have been ascertained, once they have been verified, the state is at, is, the state is bound to honor its financial obligations. And the state, under my governorship or my administration, will honor its financial obligations to pensioners and to those who are being owed gratuity. Well, I've already been whispered to that I'm taking too much time. So I think on this note, I would like to just respectfully end it here. Um, I hope I'll have chance again to interact with Ndubayen Dunsuka and to respond to more questions.
Thank you. Eh, ainé, kené, the candidate of APGA, Apuga.